We will just be another five minutes due to the in-camera meeting and we'll be starting very shortly. Could I ask all council members, please take their seats. Thank you. For those who are able to stand, please stand for the prayer and remain standing for the National Anthem. Almighty God, let us work together to serve our people. Now I'd like to ask councillor Eglie to present the National Anthem singer.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to introduce two students from Miraval High School who are here to both sing and play the piano for us this morning. This is a bit of a shot at County Cluche, but we like to think of Miraval as Canterbury West and we think we do it as well if not better, so there's a challenge for you going forward. We have this morning Safira Galani, who is going to sing "O Canada" accompanied by Shaiu on the piano. They're both in grade 12 at Miraval High School and Safira has been singing since she can remember and playing piano for 11 years. Both recently completed a six-performance run of Miraval's production of Singing in the Rain with Safira with a singing part and Shaiu backing up in the band. So without further ado, I turn it over to these two lovely ladies to lead us in the National Anthem.
Thank you very much for that beautiful rendition.
Thank you. On behalf of Mayor Jim Watson, I would like to invite Jacques Segay to the podium for this meeting's City Builders Award presentation. I would also like to ask councillor Stephen Blais to come on up also.
In this Francophonie month in Ottawa, it is my pleasure to underline the work of a francophone, the extraordinary work of a francophone in our community.
Not only do we have a modern downtown core, but we have several rural villages that add to our city's social, economic, and diversity. Preserving the character of our rural villages is an important and necessary task.
Preserving the character of our rural villages is an important and necessary task.
Not only is Jean a tireless advocate for the village of ours, he is equally committed to its residents. Working with both French and English service organizations in the local congregation, Jean spearheaded the creation of our summer youth program.
His program, at its third year, is encouraging youth to participate in civic institutions. Jean contributed to the creation of many programs, including the Community Garden, which helps residents of support housing in Vars.
Was included in the only rural destination in the Ottawa market mobile, bringing healthy, fresh food to the community. Among his other accomplishments, Jean's leadership led to the renewal of the Senatat Memorial and the establishment of the annual sing-along and lighting of the village Christmas tree.
For him, no work is too simple or too complicated, whether it be taking care of the community skating rink, supporting the community association during the youth programs, or to make sure that there's always drinks and biscuits during those activities for children. Jean has an incredible passion for his community.
And many more. I present you with the Mayor's City Builders Awards. Congratulations.
Jean, would you like to speak?
Council members, thank you very, very much for this opportunity. You cannot build a community by oneself, it's a team effort. With my colleagues of the Vars Community Association, the Vars Optimist Club, the school, the parishes, we were able to, I guess, put Vars back on the map in this wonderful city of ours. A special thank you to city staff. I see my colleague Suzanne Sanford here. I know Adam Brown is probably here or not here. These are the people who actually help us out in obtaining guidance and financing for our projects. To councillor Blais and his staff, a special thank you for their support and encouragement in making this happen.
My wife, my two kids, thank you. Thank you very much for your patience, for your encouragement and your support.
Even around this table at council, merits certainly a part of this award. So on behalf of our community of Vars, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, before we begin, I would also like to ask councillor Cluche to make a statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair. I'd like to attract to your attention the class of Mr. Seguin, they're in the 10th grade of Franco-Cité and they're visiting the city. Welcome. Franco-Cité was the former school of our colleague councillor Fleury, he was there three months ago or something like that? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clutier, Mrs. Clerk Werkel.
Councillor Midic. Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Alchentiri.
Present.
Excuse me. Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
You see.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Eglie.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Consulier Fleury.
See.
Councillor Newspom.
Present.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Consulier Clutier.
Present.
Consulier Blais.
Present.
Councillor DeRousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffatt.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson. Le Karamet Ten, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madame Clerk. Confirmations of minutes. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Councillor Leeper has a declaration.
Thank you, Chair. I, councillor Jeff Leeper, declare a potential deemed indirect pecuniary interest on council Agenda Eight, Item Five, Audit Committee Report Two, Office of the Auditor General, OAG, Annual Report and Detailed Audit Report, Review of City Funding to the Ottawa School of Speech and Drama, as my wife had an affiliation with the Ottawa School of Speech and Drama.
Thank you councillor Leeper. Communications as presented, received? Regrets as noted? Motion to introduce reports, councillor Fleury and second my councillor Tierney.
That the report from the selection panel, Property Standards and License Appeals Committee, Report One. The report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending the 20th of March 2015. Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee, Report Two A. Audit Committee Reports, One A and Two. Finance and Economic Development Committee, Report Two A. Planning Committee Reports, Three B and Four. And Transportation Committee, Two A. Be received and considered and that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider a matter rising from the Special Transit Commission meeting of March 25, 2015 with respect to OC Transport Management's collective bargaining with the amalgamated transit unions and the Canadian Union of Public Employees. Waiver of the rules is being requested, as it is in the city's best interests, to consider this matter immediately. Mr. Councillor Tierney.
Consent agenda, councillor Blais and councillor... Oh, sorry. Learning in progress here. Adopt, adopt aim? Thank you. Before consent agenda, councillor Blais and Kakish have a motion on the Transit Commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. That council approve the in-camera directions referred to council by the Transit Commission at its meeting of 25 March 2015 pertaining to collective bargaining with the amalgamated transit unions and the Canadian Union of Public Employees.
Carried? Now we will move on to the consent agenda. Selection Panel, Property Standards and License Appeals Committee, Report.
Report number one, the juries of the Appeals Committee with respect to the standards. Nominations with respect to licenses.
City clerks, graffiti, municipal. Status update, council inquiries and motions for the period ending 20th of March 2015.
Status update, council inquiries and motions for the period ending 20th of March 2015.
Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee, Report. Report. Monahan Creek Municipal Drain, South Hope Side Road Modification and Improvements. Carried? Audit Committee, Report One A. Ernst &amp; Young LLP 2014 Audit Plan.
Ernst &amp; Young LLP 2014 Audit Plan.
Audit Report Number Two. Councillor Leeper has left the chair. Office of the Auditor General Annual Report and Detailed Audit Reports.
Office of the Auditor General, OAG, Annual Report and Detailed Audit Reports.
Item number six, Office of the Auditor General, OAG, 2015 Work Plan.
Office of the Auditor General, OAG, 2015 Work Plan.
On this report, from Bytown Market to Byward Market. Carried? Finance and Economic Development Committee, Report Two A.
Finance and Economic Development Committee, Report Two A.
Paid by members of council and council appointees.
Two thousand fourteen Statement of Remuneration Benefits and Expenses Paid to Members of Council and Council Appointees.
Can you read it, please?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And this motion where subsequent Finance and Economic Development Committee consideration of this report at the meeting of March 3, 2015. Additional information has come forward from the Mississippi Valley Conservation Authority, MVCA, with respect to the allocation of honorism and expenses are due to one of the MVCA board member. And there's a list of where the error is, so therefore be it resolved that council approve that Document Two, Table Two of the Report 2014, Statement of Remuneration Benefits and Expenses Paid to Member of Council and Council Appointee be amended to indicate that MVCA member John Caro received 4,004.9 in honorism and 1,844 in expenses in 2014.
Thank you councillor Alchentiri. Received as amended? Carried as amended?
Carried.
Thank you. Number eight, Amendment of Terms of Sale for 2720 Richmond Road Former Grant Alternative Schools to Centre Multi-Service Francophone de l'Ouest, including approval of first mortgage on the property.
Amendment of the terms of sale of 2720 Richmond Road Former Grant Alternative School to Centre Multi-Services Francophone de l'Ouest, CMFO, including approval of first mortgage on the property.
Hold. Which one was requested? Okay, thank you. Councillor Riley? Brockington? Planning Committee Report, Three B.
Planning Committee Report, Three.
590 Broadview Avenue under Part Four of the Ontario Heritage Act.
Designation of Broadview Public School, 590 Broadview Avenue under Part Four of the Ontario Heritage Act.
Okay, dissent as noted, Madame Chair? Thank you. Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment, 443, 445, 447 MacArthur Avenue.
Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment, 443, 445 and 447 MacArthur Avenue.
Do you have a technical amendment to this item? Can you just give the quick version, please?
So therefore be resolved, Report ACS 2015-PAI-PGM-0017 be amended by deleting the entirety of the Report Recommendations section as stated on page two of the report. And number two, that the same report be amended by adding Document Seven, Proposed Official Plan Amendment as attached. Number three, that the report be amended by adding Document Eight, Details of the Recommended Zoning as follows. The zoning map of bylaw 2008-250 is amended by rezoning the land shown in Document One from TM to what we have TM, whatever it is. Amend Section 239 Urban Exceptions by adding a new exception similar in effect to the following. And I can skip to be a further resolved pursuant to the Planning Act subsection 417, no further notice be given.
Thank you. Carry as amended? Carry on the technical amendment? Okay. Technical amendment? Are you dissenting on the technical amendment? No? Okay. And so carry on the report as amended? So, two dissent here, you got them? So to dissent here, you got them? Okay. Thank you. Planning Committee Report Four, 69 Terry Fox Drive.
Zoning bylaw amendment Terry Fox Drive 469, adopted.
Amendment, number twelve, amendment to the draft Mature Neighborhoods bylaw 2012-147, Ontario Municipal Board mediated settlement.
Amendments to the draft Mature Neighborhoods bylaw 2012-147, Ontario Municipal Board mediated settlement.
I'd like to speak on this.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just want to note a few things about how innovative, important and impactful this policy is before we vote today. This policy is the first of its kind in Canada. Nowhere else has a municipality developed a policy to preserve neighborhood character. It provides residents peace of mind that what their streets look like now is what they will look like in the future. This policy is a result of five years' worth of consultations and collaborations with residents and the development industry, and what's before us today has the added bonus of avoiding OMB costs at an OMB hearing. I want to thank the tireless Beth Demarest, Beth, thank you, who has devoted a good chunk of her career to this, Alain Miguelis, for his devotion to making Ottawa a great city, and Leanne Sneddon, I don't know if Leanne's here, for leading the charge to bring this project to a successful conclusion. This bylaw will deliver infill that fits, and that's a big accomplishment. Well done, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Arter. Carried?
Carried.
Transportation Committee Report Two A, 12B, the committee of transport, level cross enclosure grant for Brookfield multi-service pathway.
Level cross enclosure grant for Brookfield multi-use pathway.
At this time, there was no request to remove items from the consent agenda. However, councillor Leeper has indicated that he has a question on item number N. Can he ask that question, councillor Leeper?
May I ask that it be held?
Sorry?
May I ask that it be held, item N?
You want to hold all the items?
Sure. Okay. So whatever the process is, I need to...
Any other items to be removed from the consent? Okay. Carried on the remaining items? Okay, so we go back to councillor Leeper's held item, which was number eight, amendment of terms of sale for 2720 Richmond Road. Councillor Leeper? Rockington, sorry.
Are we doing grant first? We're going to do grant now, Mr. Chair? Okay. With respect to item eight on the agenda, I just needed clarification from staff. I just, I've read the report. Clarification from staff with respect to this item, I just want to receive clarification about risk to the city of Ottawa if certain things happen or don't happen. I understand that there is risk involved, but I just want to make sure before we vote on this item, it's clear in my mind. Could I just have a brief reply from staff, please?
Peter Ratkey from Real Estate Office. So I would say that the, we still need to complete the sales transaction with them upon council approval. There is a, the biggest change with the report before council today is that when the construction bids came in, the bids were over their budget, and they had asked for, to be able to place a mortgage on the property of up to $850,000. So from a financial point of view, the risk would be that the bank would have a first position on the mortgage, and if the city were to decide to act on their option to repurchase the property, then they would have to make the bank hole on whatever was left on that mortgage. But such an action would come back before council for a decision.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councillor Leeper?
The, so my understanding is, is that if the, the organization were to fail, the bank would obviously have that, that first lender priority. So if we were to re-acquire the property, that it's a $2 million or $1.9 million property that we're giving to the, the community organization, in order to get it back, we would have to discharge that debt, or it reverts to the bank. So the bank would receive a $2 million property for essentially $850,000 at most. What is our, what is our feeling right now with respect to the ability for this organization to, to carry that mortgage? Do we have a good understanding of what their sustainability is moving forward?
Through the deputy mayor. As mentioned in the report, the CMFO is proposing a community center to serve the Francophone residents in West Ottawa. Their, their business plan is to retrofit the building to a multi-use service center that will include community groups and daycare services, so they are right now securing leases. And this, their business plan's been reviewed by the bank also, and so their plan looks stable right now.
Okay. So we have confidence that there's, that there's going to be the revenue stream for them moving forward to, to carry this mortgage and to discharge it?
Yes. I mean, they have the prospects, though they still have to secure the leases, and so, and they want to have that done before the, the school year starts in the fall for their maintenance.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
No further questions? Motion carried? Now we go on to 2014 Annual Report pursuant to Building Code, held by councillor Leeper.
I was taking a look at the building code report. I'm interested in hearing from staff about the level of the, the capital reserve. There are three reserve funds into which surpluses are put. One of those funds is the, and forgive me if I, if I don't get the title exactly right, but it is the Building Code Capital Fund, which is intended to purchase trucks, IT systems, et cetera. That surplus currently, or that fund currently stands at $12.4 million roughly at year end, December 31, 2014. Taking a look back, it has gone from in 2009, $6.8 million, $6.48, $5.1, big jump to $13.9, a little bit of a reduction to get to this $12.4 million. Is there a, is there a cap on how big this fund should be? I, I get the sense when I'm looking at how this fund has grown, that it is, it is larger than what we need with respect to a prudent reserve. I'm wondering how the decisions are made to put the money into the capital versus the insurance versus the, the operational reserve. Should we be looking next year at putting less into the capital? Can I get some flavor around that? I think it would be helpful as a, as a new councillor.
Mr. Chair, I'll have a few comments, and then I'll ask Mr. Badin, the chief building inspector, to provide some comments. So in terms of the, the capital contribution fund, we have increased over the years to allow us to move into a number of technological, technological changes we're going to have to make to the systems we have within the, the building system, so that's going to cost many millions of dollars. So we've, we've certainly been trying to have that fund built to the point where we could carry that, carry that out. We certainly have discussions every year when we look at the, look at the fund, because, you know, we are, in our opinion, reaching the cap of where we need the funds for the, for all three, and, you know, we can't use that, that money for anything else, so what we, what we contemplate is probably, you know, this year we don't anticipate much of a, of a reserve coming to us, but if it does, we'd be looking at then reducing building permit fees with the excess that we do have.
Thank you. Is there any more questions on this item? So move that approve the 2014 Annual Report pursuant to the Building Code Act. Carried? Okay, so now we go to motion to adopt reports, myself and the rapport, councillor Flory and Tierney.
That the report from the selection panel, Property Standards and License Appeals Committee Report One, the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Status Update, council inquiries and motions for the period ending the 20th of March 2015, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report Two A, audit committee reports one A and Two, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report Two A, planning committee reports Three B and Four, and Transportation Committee Two A be received and adopted as amended.
Thank you, councillor Flory. Carried? Carried. Motion of which notices have been previously given, councillor Newsbone, can you introduce your motion?
Yeah, this is a motion for which we had noticed at the last meeting, related to the Built Heritage Subcommittee, and the fact that although we held a facilitated session this, this past month, we won't be in a situation to look at our revised terms of reference as stated in the governance report until sometime in the spring, and therefore this was a, a simple shift of language to enable the Built Heritage Subcommittee to comment on heritage overly matters, and the amendment is from after April 1, 2015 to after July 1, 2015. Thank you.
Any questions? Carried? Okay, so now we'll move to motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. The first one that we have is councillor Eglie, and seconded by councillor Shirelli on 50 Capilano development charges.
This is a motion to assist the City View curling club in rebuilding, and essentially what it does is, we would be paying them back or giving them a credit for part of the development charges they'd be doing because they're demolishing and rebuilding. This just gives them the credit upfront, which increases their cash flow and makes it easier for them to keep the club open during construction, so the people in my community, councillor Shirelli's community, can continue to curl there. So it'd be most helpful for the club, keeps it going, keeps it alive, and helps them with their, their construction process, so I'd appreciate it if everybody could, could support the motion. It's also staff-supported. Thank you.
Is there waiver of the rules? Carried? The motion carried? Second one is councillor Alchantieri, and seconded by councillor Moffett, on Fed Code terms of reference.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. This motion, move myself, seconded by councillor Moffett, that the rules of procedure be waived to consider the following motion due to the fact that the Finance Economic Development Committee as scheduled to consider at first debenture by law at its meeting of April 2, 2013, whereas 2014, 2018 council governance review report recommended the elimination of the debenture committee and the transfer of responsibility to the Finance Economic Development Committee, and whereas accordingly to the Finance Economic Development Committee's term of reference approved by council on February 11, 2015, included a new section on debentures under the heading Specific Responsibilities, and whereas upon a further review of these terms of reference by staff and finance and legal services, there are, there was a desire to include greater specificity with respect to the delegated authority granted through the new delegation of authority by law, by law number 2014-435. Therefore be resolved that bullet one, under debentures, be amended by adding the words or proceeded with one or more bank loan, or entered onto bank loan agreement, interest rate exchange agreement, or bonded forward agreement pursuant to section 16 as applied to debit issue as further described in, so that's the bullet now read as follow. The authority to enact debenture by law to authority the insurance of debentures where the project debit authority has been approved by council and the treasurer has proceeded with one or more debit issue pursuant to section 15, or proceeded with one or more bank loan, or entered into bank loan agreement, interest rate exchange agreement, or bond forward agreements pursuant to section 16 as the applied to debit issue and as further described in schedule A of by law number 2014-435, the delegation of authority by law. Be further resolved that bullet two and three under debenture be corrected by replacing reference to debenture committee with Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. There was just a minor error on the, on the number, it should be meeting of April 2, 2015. Is waiver of rules carried? Is the item carried? Thank you. Next one is councillor McKenney, and seconded by councillor Deans on federal and provincial funding day programs. Councillor McKenney?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just want to, you know, did you want me to read out the full motion, or should I just give a little bit of a, okay? Okay. I think everybody is, is familiar with this. We recently had an allocation process where monies were reallocated as per some federal funding under, under a housing first approach, which meant that, you know, it resulted in a change in the operational structure for some of our communities' day programs, and these day programs, many of them also offer programs and services on behalf of the city. So, you know, these programs have not seen a change in their funding since 2000. This is a sudden change for, for those, those day programs who offer services on our behalf. So this essentially, the motion, you know, will help them to maintain operational viability while transitioning their programs to accommodate the, the funding change that they've seen. So essentially, we've got agencies who, you know, got both federal and, and city funding, continue to get funding from us, but, but it is, it is a significant change for them. So this will essentially be a one-time allocation of $50,000 from the city's one-time and unforeseen account, which agencies who qualify, who continue to offer services for this, on behalf of the city, can apply to, to our community and social services. So it's seconded, it's moved by myself, seconded by councillor, councillor Deans, and looking for support on that. Thank you.
Is the waiver of the rules carried? On the item, councillor Flory?
Thank you. Looking, as, as we go back to this challenge, we've done a lot of coverage, received a lot of comments from you, from the clients, but also from residents. I think it's important for us to remember that, well, first off, I'm supportive of the motion, but I think it's important for us to not focus necessarily on the organization, but the clients themselves, as we transition our supports or that funding to perhaps to organizations or renew our engagement with existing ones. It's important that no clients are left behind, it's residents that are vulnerable, that need the supports that are existing in our community. So I, I want to reaffirm my support for that motion. So I want to reaffirm my support for that motion, also, I'm looking forward to seeing the list of successful organizations as the transition dates is happening, I think at the end of this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flurry. Counsel Kakish?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just have a quick question. I spoke with Counsel McKenney offline and prepared to support the motion, but one of the concerns I have in the criteria here is that we don't have clarification on how this would be rolled out. The pot of money is there, it's $50,000, but we've heard from many groups at Community and Protective Services Committee who want more funding as a result of some of the changes that they're seeing from their provincial funding. So how would, what are the criteria, and how would this application work?
So my understanding and reading of the motion is that essentially we would consult with the nine day programs, or eight day programs, that receive direct municipal funding, and we would get a recommendation from them as to what are their needs and how is best to expend that $50,000 to meet those requirements. And then we would have them make a recommendation, we'd go through that formal process, and it would be for operational pressures only. It would not be used for other types of pressures.
So this is open to anyone technically, any of those agencies that would want to come and apply of those eight or nine? We don't have a breakdown for how we're going to split this $50,000? It would be on who needs it more? But that's not being addressed, or the intent is not in the motion?
That's generally the intent and the process that we use for other types of funding within that area. The day programs are presented at CPSC in 2014 as well as 2015. They have a coalition, they have a chair, so we believe it's best to work through that chair and that coalition and come to an understanding as to what are the most immediate needs for the funding and how should it be distributed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kakish. Counsel Leifer?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick comment that I am very pleased to see that we were able to arrive at this lifeline for these organizations. As we move toward greater and greater emphasis on Housing First, it is critical that we have the supports in place to ensure that that is successful. As we house people, they need access to exactly the kind of services that they have here in order that they're not living in isolation, where they're dealing with issues of trying to learn job skills, life skills, recovery from addiction. It's critical that we have ways for them to tap into the community and feel part of a larger community and supported. So it's not necessarily the city's obligation to step in with this lifeline, but I'm extremely pleased that we are. It's a good demonstration of what the mayor spoke about with respect to being a more caring city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Leifer. Counsel Wilkinson?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Just a question to staff, and this funding is because the federal and provincial governments changed the rules, and it's affecting people. Is any, are we letting them know that they've done, is having this impact? Because many of these programs do assist people within their housing, which is supposed to be one of their criteria, but it doesn't fit their rules. To see that we, if we can get the changes that are being made, and which I support moving in that direction, would be less disastrous to other agencies who've been using, receiving the funding for some years and have set up programs to help a lot of people.
So there are really two areas here. One is the operation of day programs, and that's what this motion specifically deals with. The day programs were not part of the RFO that was submitted. There was no applications for that funding, and no agency was actually receiving funding out of the federal programs, or applications specifically for day programs. Where there are some overlap for the programs is largely in terms of the overlap in the total administration and the total funding when those things were, came together. So the sudden loss means these organizations are now having to adapt to a different funding stream, and they're not the only one within that bucket that's undergoing that particular change at this point in time. So that's what it's focused on. It's on the fact that, to some extent, some of your administrative and staffing costs are not well transitioned, because the province and, or the province and the feds only provide 60 days notice to us when they change funding, that's why our contracts only speak to 60 days.
I think that we need to have some discussions with them about those kind of timings. They may not realize with nonprofit groups that that is really difficult to deal with, and that when they change the funding parameters, that there is an impact, and the city's paying up 100% of the cost of something that really is not our program, but we're going to do it because of the issues that it creates.
It's an ongoing problem with all of our provincial contracts, and not just for those in the nonprofit sector, but in fact for ourselves. When we've lost contracts, or the provinces defunded in various areas, including employment, we've had to bear the cost of that far beyond the 60 days notice that we provided by the province, and those are very standard government contracts today, are those 60 days. But I do understand what you're saying, and yes, it is a problem for us.
So you have, or you brought this to their attention, that we should be having longer periods of time to make adjustments? Because I know sometimes they then give extra funding to make adjustments, it's kind of crazy.
I think one of the areas that we are very cautious about now in terms of ourselves is when we enter into contracts, when we see those 60-day clauses, is that is a real cause for concern, specifically if there's no commitment to ongoing funding. If they anticipate that we're going to staff up and hire individuals for those programs and not willing to make the commitment, then typically those are areas now where the city takes a very hard look, and often we don't pursue those contracts.
And they are not willing to change that 60 days?
They have not been. That's their Treasury Board standard clause, and typically with the province, it's, their contracts are really not open to discussion. This is the contract, and you will sign. We have, we have an intent to get those clauses changed, but we've not been successful to date.
Can we talk to you a bit further about this offline? Thank you very much, and I do support the funding. I think we can't, we need to do this kind of assistance, but I think that so many times are put in this unfair position of having to fund things which really should not be being happening to be funded from tax dollars.
Thank you, Counsel Wilkinson. Counsel Yublee?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. The, I just, a couple of clarifications here. This $50,000 is a part of a total of $50,000 that people can apply to get a portion of. It's not going to be grants of $50,000 each handed out, correct?
That's correct.
And I don't see it in here, but anyone that applied, or that did not apply for these, for this program would not be qualified to go for this grant money. Is that correct?
Essentially, anyone who currently has a municipal contract with us for funding for day programs, that's who's eligible to apply for the emergency operational assistance.
Okay, and also, based on some of the comments I heard around the table here, what I understood in the first go-around with this is that nobody, none of these cuts that are taking place due to funding loss are an elimination of a service to people, that there is these services provided by other groups, and in some cases their funding's being increased. Is that correct?
Yes, the housing funding, the RFO that was issued for that funding was related to supports for people who are either living on the streets, living in rooming houses, or other types of supports. There was no funding for day programs. However, we have municipal, this is a municipal program and service, we fund it through grants to those agencies. This is to help them with the adjustment, to make sure that the municipal services maintained during the disruption based on the other levels of funding that they've lost, because in many cases they're delivering two contracts at the same time, and there has been some loss of efficiency for that agency, and this is what this is intended to help bridge for them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Yublee. Counsel Deans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a second to the motion, I just wanted to add my support for it. This is by no means an attempt to replace with city dollars money lost to some of the organizations through the Housing First program. We administer Housing First, but it's all federal and provincial dollars, and I don't believe it's in our interest to step in and take up that funding that has been changed. The Housing First policy is a good one, and when the list comes out, probably on April 1st, you'll see that there are other agencies that are getting more funding. It's 100% pass-through, it's just a change, a shift in direction. But having said that, the reason I supported this motion is because there is a reality of those day programs, that they will have to transition, and this is really emergency funding to assist in the very short term with operational expenses through the transition period, and I think that's a reasonable approach to take, and that's why I'm seconding the motion and would ask my colleagues to support this motion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Deans. And there's no other ones. Counsel McKenney, did you want to wrap up?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for your comments and questions. I know that, you know, this was brought up some time ago, so it's been kind of out there, and have been having discussions with many of you, and, you know, I appreciate, you know, the input from my colleagues. I've spoken to many of you in the hall, and certainly nobody agrees that we should, you know, that it's okay to leave agencies that serve, you know, our vulnerable population, you know, at any risk. One of the biggest issues raised with me was the fact that, you know, we have to, we do have to be careful, I'm echoing what Counsel Deans just said, that we're not, you know, we're not backfilling where the federal government has pulled some funding from day programs. We can't do that on the property tax base, it's not sustainable, it's not the right thing to do, and the mayor was clear about that, and I agreed with him at the time. But I do also want to, you know, just say two things. I do agree with Housing First, it is better for us, it is better for us as a city, for everyone in the city, including those folks who don't have housing or have unstable housing, to get good, strong, sustainable housing with the supports that they need to keep that housing. Nobody would argue against that. There's, you know, we have to make sure that agencies who deliver our day programs in the meantime aren't at risk, that this is what this will allow. So I just want to thank everyone for your questions, your comments, and particularly also to the mayor, who over the course of the last few weeks I've worked very closely with, and, you know, he does also share my view on how we can move forward on this in a fair way, and to show that we really are a caring city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. On to motion. Carried? Okay, we have one more, and it's a motion from Counsel Shirelli, and seconded by Counsel McKenney, and it's obviously has to do with something about the SENS, and the way our counsel is dressed today. So Counsel Shirelli, please present the motion.
Counsel Deans has offered hamburgers for lunch today. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's moved by myself, seconded by Counsel McKenney, whereas time sense of nature of this item needs to, requires suspension of the rules, needs to be considered today. Therefore, be it resolved that city council was, has formally recognized Elgin Street as SENS mile in 2010 and 2013, approving the installation of our commemorative signs to support the Ottawa Senators Hockey Club, and whereas the Ottawa Senators were 14 points out of a playoff spot in early February, and whereas the team has been on an historic streak in their last 21 games, and whereas the Ottawa Senators are now in a playoff position with 10 games left to play, and whereas council wishes to assist residents to support the club's drive to the Stanley Cup playoffs, and whereas the current undefeated streak by the Ottawa Senators goalie Andrew Hammond ties one all-time NHL record and could beat a second within days, whereas this means the Senators' run is exceptional in history, therefore be it resolved that the City of Ottawa install SENS mile commemorative signs immediately on Elgin Street for the duration of the 2014-15 season. Mr. Deputy Mayor, there, a lot of us were around here during the Stanley Cup final season with the Senators, and the feeling out there, the outpouring of support, and the wish to be part of it all was huge, and what we have today is very similar. I think when you're in politics, the number-one thing someone once said as a joke was, but it's true, is it's important to understand where you fit in the space-time continuum, and right now, we are in an historic run that is magical to this city, and I think as city leaders, it's our responsibility to at least contribute to the, helping people get the ability to get behind this and support it. That much is very important, and a lot of people have commented along those lines to me, and I know to a number of you over the past couple of weeks. I know at Bell Media, people like Rob Snow have encouraged that we do exactly this, and I think we should still do it. Anyway, so I urge all of you to get on board and do this, there are about two weeks left in the season. We'll know, we know that from staff, they can install these and be ready in time for the game on Sunday, so logistically, it's very possible. So I urge everyone to get behind this and support the SENS.
Okay, I hope we don't jinx them. Is the waiver of the rules carried? Yeah, we have to waive the rules first. Carried, waiver of the rules? Okay, so we have a few speakers. Sports Commissioner, Jody Middick, Counsel Middick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think it's a great idea, I just, as sports commissioner, wish I'd thought of it, and, you know, it's pretty rare you see a team rally from the position that the Senators were in, and, you know, as our NHL team for Ottawa, I fully support that we get behind this, and again, thanks for stealing my thunder, Rick, but it's all good. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Middick. Counsel Moffett?
Just to build really quickly on what our deputy mayor said, I just wanted to voice that generally in a streak like this, you know, players won't change their jockstrap, they won't change any regular things they do every single day. So I just wanted to be clear that if they happen to lose tomorrow night to New York, that it is Rick's fault. I just want that to be on the record, that this streak is because of a certain number of factors, and that when you change something within that streak, and we've never had this motion before over the course of the streaks, this is a very unique thing within the streaks. So I really think that the blame will solely lie with Counsel Shirelli. It won't be Henrik Lundqvist, it won't be Rick Nash, it'll be, it'll be Rick Shirelli. And it's his fault if they lose, and I think, just to be clear, that the Ottawa Sun should come up with some catchy, catchy cover story with Rick's face, wearing the jersey, that strictly makes fun of Rick Shirelli. But I support the motion.
Thank you, Counsel Moffett. Counsel? Counsel McKenney?
Thank you. Well, I don't want to share that blame if it happens, but it's, I support the motion. Elgin Street is in my ward, and I think it's been since 2010 that we've recognized it as the SENS mile. This has definitely ignited a sense of pride in the city, you know, the fact that I'm paying particularly close attention means that, means that most people are, so it's, it's...
I'm on the bandwagon.
But it is, it's, you know, it's good for business, it's lots of fun, it allows us to show our support across the city and bring people into one area where they can celebrate. So good luck, and Rick, and the Senators, and I hope that it lasts a little longer than last time.
Thank you, Counsel McKenney. Counsel Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was at the game on Monday night, I guess, and I think I don't, can't go to any more games for a while because it's very heart-stopping, but they, I, that's, I pay for my own tickets, by the way. I go regularly. But the, I think one of the things here is to make sure that we don't upset the apple cart by going too soon. I'm prepared to support this going, but it, sometimes when you advance things, they don't end up working out, so we thought all keep on cheering really loudly and supporting the team. They've really come together, and it's interesting to watch how they have gelled, although occasionally they let down those things, and that's when we get the heart attacks. But they, it will be a lot of fun having this here, and I think the city benefits by having something that they can grab onto, because it helps to build city building, and I thank Rick for bringing it forward. I've been involved with the Senators since they came here, and they have always done so much for this city, and I'd like to just make sure that we continue to support them in these kinds of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wilkinson. Counsel Cadre? Councilor Cadry.
Just as a final explanation mark on this discussion, go Sens, go.
Thank you, Councilor Cadry. Councilor Shirelli, did you want to wrap up? No? Okay. And the media says we don't have enough discussion around the table. Okay, so on the motion? Carried. Okay, so now notices a motion. I'd like to remind all members that when there are notices of motion, and it's strictly presenting the motion and no debate of the item. Counselor McKenney, Glow Fair Street closures.
Thank you. I'll read it out. Whereas the Bank Street Business Improvement Area will host the annual Glow Fair Music, Light, Art Event, and whereas many of the Glow Fair activities will be happening outdoors on Bank Street and Gloucester Street, including a main stage for performances; and whereas the BIA has requested the closure of Bank Street from Slater to James Street, and also Gloucester Street from O'Connor Avenue to Bank Street from 1:00 p.m. Friday, June 19th to 6:00 a.m. Sunday, June 21st, 2015, to increase the safety and security of the area. And whereas the City of Ottawa Special Events Bylaw states that no road closures be permitted on weekdays, therefore be it resolved that council approve the road closure for Bank Street from Slater Street to James Street and Gloucester Street from O'Connor Avenue to Bank Street from 1:00 p.m. Friday, June 19th to 6:00 a.m. Sunday, June 21st, 2015, for the Glow Fair Music, Light, Art Event, providing it meets the requirements, conditions, and approval of the Special Events Advisory Team.
Thank you, Counselor McKenney. That motion is seconded by Counselor Flurry. Next motion is Counselor Brockington and seconded by Counselor Deans on airport signage.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is fairly lengthy. I'm just looking to your direction, whether you want me to read the whereas clauses or just summarize them.
The end part is fine.
The therefore clauses?
Yeah.
Okay. Just to give some context, this is regarding airport authority signage on city right-of-way land. You have a current city roads bylaw that does not permit this. There is recognition that the signage is needed and required and useful, and that the city does want to work in partnership with the airport. There's also a whereas clause that talks about signage that was recently removed for the Park and Fly, which is near the airport. Therefore be it resolved that City Council, 1, approve that the application of sections 2 to 5 of bylaw 2003-520 as amended be waived as below and as described in this motion to allow the airport authority sign to be located on the airport parkway at the entrance of the airport, provided that, A, the airport authority enter into an agreement for the sign in question to address issues of placement and location, maintenance, liability, removal and related issues to the satisfaction of the GM Planning and Growth Management on behalf of the city; and B, that the agreement further provide that all costs for installation, ongoing maintenance, and eventual removal and remediation for the sign be borne by the authority. Part 2, delegate the authority to execute the agreement with the airport authority to the general manager, Planning and Growth Management, on behalf of the city. Part 3, direct staff to develop a wayfinding signage program for parking in around the airport in cooperation with stakeholders, and report back by Q4 2015 to the appropriate Standing Committee of Council with recommendations. And finally, Part 4, approve that until the wayfinding signage program report is considered by council, sections 2 to 5 of bylaw 2003-520 as amended also be waived to allow the Ottawa Park and Fly located at 3600 Uplands Drive to place seven directional signs within the city's right-of-way on an interim basis, provided that, A, the Ottawa Park and Fly enter into an agreement for the signs in question to address issues of placement and location, maintenance, liability, removal, and related issues to the satisfaction of the general manager, Planning and Growth Management, on behalf of the city; and B, that the agreement further provide that all costs, and I'd like to strike the word installation, for ongoing maintenance and eventual removal and remediation for the signs be borne by Ottawa Park and Fly. So that notice of motion is provided by myself, and it will be seconded by Counselor Deans.
Counselor Medick, and seconded by Counselor Leeper, Race Weekend.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We all know Race Weekend is coming up. Ottawa is, Race Weekend has become our largest tourist event in Ottawa. It also attracts about 50,000 participants every year and is forecasted to generate about $30 million in economic activity for the NCR. So therefore be it resolved that City Council declare May 22nd, 2015 to May 24th, 2015 to be Race Weekend in the city of Ottawa.
Thank you, Counselor Medick. Last one that we have is Counselor Newsbaum, and seconded by Counselor Kakish, Municipal Election Act.
Thank you very much, Chair. This is a motion that will seek council approval to request the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to enact legislation amending the Municipal Elections Act to permit the City of Ottawa to prohibit corporate and trade union contributions to candidates for municipal councils, consistent with the authority provided to the City of Toronto in Section 70.1, subsection 1 of the current Municipal Elections Act, 1996. I think the only thing to say here is this is simply a motion that were to pass would seek an amendment of the legislation and would not on its own ban union and corporate donations. It's a two-step process, so first the legislation needs to be amended, and then if council were to so choose, as a second step, it could pass or enact bylaws which would ban union and corporate donations. But at this stage, this is not about the ban. This is simply about governance, ensuring that we're masters in our own house. It's a matter of governance principle insofar as we would have the ability to determine this issue.
Counselor Newsbaum, just.
Yeah, so I'm just explaining it because.
No, it's not time to explain. I'm just reading the motion.
Oh, then I'll stop there. I think it's fairly self-explanatory. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, motion to introduce bylaws, Counselor Flurry, and seconded by Counselor Tierney.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, first and second readings be read, and three readings be read and pass. Carried.
We've done that one. Confirmation of bylaw, legal matter, that's counsel, Counselor Flurry, and seconded by Counselor Tierney.
That the following bylaw be read and pass to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of 25th of March, 2015.
Carried. Inquiries, we have one from Counselor Yubley. Can you please read the inquiry?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can staff please report to council with an action plan to address what we are going to do with regards to the significant increase in frozen pipes that homes in many of our wards experience this year? Is there a plan, for example, to inspect all locations, including the new builds, that may still be covered under new home warranty programs? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yubley. Is there any other inquiries? None? Okay. End term, Counselor Flurry, seconded by Counselor Tierney.
That the proceedings of the City Council meeting, March 25th, be adjourned.